I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Given the current shelter in place order covering the state of California and the social distance guidelines issued by federal, state, and local authorities, the city is implementing changes to participate in Planning Commission meetings until notified otherwise. The council chambers will be open to the public, but we will be implementing social distancing policies and will limit the number of people who may be in the council chamber. All attendees are required to wear masks to enter the council chambers. The meeting will be webcast and accessed at the website located on the City of Clovis website. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in meetings by accessing the webcast at the city's website, providing written comment at the same website, participating by phone, or coming to the city council meeting in person, or city planning meeting in person. We are practicing social distancing and can only accommodate a maximum of 16 guests at one time. I'd like to now have everybody stand for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have roll call?
Thank you, Chair. For the record, I want to state that Commissioner Antuna will not be joining us tonight. We received a phone call a few hours ago that they had a loss in their family, so they had to take an emergency trip out of town. So Commissioner Betstead?
Here.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Here.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Here.
Chair Hatcher?
Here. And can I have approval of the minutes from last meeting?
So moved.
A second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hinkle, seconded by Chair Hatcher, to approve the minutes of May 28, 2020. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Betstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Do we have any Commission Secretary comments?
We do. You will find on your desk that you have received additional correspondence related to item number three, so those have been placed there for you. Also, on July 10th, we will be celebrating the retirement of one Dwight Crowell, our Planning Development Services Director. I believe you were tasked with assigning someone to speak at this event. Have we decided on who will be speaking?
I would like to...
Anyone else object? I believe Alma also said she wanted to on an email, but we can confirm with her as well.
Okay, very good. For now, we will stick with Commissioner Antuna. Lastly, Senior Planner Dave, City Planner Dave Merchant would like to add some conditional discussion.
Thank you, just a couple of points. One, in follow-up to the last Planning Commission meeting where there was some discussion about a housing tract and potentially limiting the future rental of housing units, single-family units in that subdivision, the city has taken a look at that and determined that imposing that kind of condition on a residential development would be unlawful and subject the city to actions brought by developers, homeowners, and housing advocates, and as that is not the kind of condition that the city will or should be considering in the future. That hasn't come up with any degree of consistency, so we don't view it as a problem, just to keep that in mind for future considerations. Secondly, also in response to the last Planning Commission meeting, there was some interest in learning more or getting some feedback about reviewing large environmental documents that were included as part of the packet. And a similar question came forth from the city council a few days later. We've done things a little bit differently with your packet this evening in that the staff report includes the initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the project, but the technical studies that are used to provide factual data and analysis for the technical, excuse me, for the initial study are included by reference and available on the city's website, so they're not directly attached, which should reduce the size of the electronic files that you have to navigate. When reviewing environmental documents, maybe let's go back a little bit, when preparing the environmental documents, staff utilizes the technical studies as a resource to prepare the environmental document and to make the conclusions that are presented there. And they are technically part of the record and always available for any member of the public or any decision-maker to review, but you only, you should not feel obliged that you have to read every word of those unless there's some element of the initial study that you want additional background on. So don't feel like because there is a technical study that it's part of the mandatory reading unless there's something that you see in the initial study that you want to follow up and have explained in more detail. So we'll continue to provide the technical studies as available on the website unless we hear that the Commission and/or the council separately would like to see them come back and be attached directly to the staff report packet. So that's the news for the evening, and I'll hand it back over.
Lando, do you have anything else? Moving on to the Planning Commission member comments.
I'd like to make a comment on that last statement about rentals. I think it was misunderstood, the direction on that conversation. The direction was that there was a way to control rentals in an area by going to affordable housing programs that would allow them to do that, and maybe they would want to talk to the City of Clovis because they have done it on their affordable housing and find out how they did that. So that was the direction of that comment. It wasn't the direction for this committee to put out their rental controls on developments. That was just a suggestion that they may want to look into if that was a concern. That's all it was.
Any comments? Okay. Moving on to business from the floor. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the Planning Commission on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. If anybody has an item, if they would go to the podium. Seeing none, we will go to the next item. Consider approval CUP 2019-014, a request to approve a conditional use permit for establishment of a government facility in a business campus setting with associated customer service and parking for the property generally bound by Peach, Dakota, a portion of Airways Boulevard, Villa, and Ashland Avenues. County of Fresno Department of Social Services applicant, Cook Land Company property owner, Arc Tech representative. Staff?
Thank you, Chair and Commission. As indicated, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for an adaptive reuse of the former Schneider Electric facility. Schneider Electric formerly operated this building in 2012, subsequent to the purchase from Pelco Security. With the closure of the operation of the buildings, Cook Land Company purchased all of the buildings in approximately 2017 to provide a new home for the Fresno County Department of Social Services, which we'll refer to as DSS. The property is an Arizona industrial, which permits the reuse of the existing buildings and, more specifically, government facilities subject to a conditional use permit. CUP 2018-15, which was on January 29th, the applicant submitted and received approval of the conditional use permit for the first government facilities building right at the northeast corner of Dakota and Peach avenues. Approval permitted the applicant to move forward with the improvements to this building. One of the key areas of discussion with the CUP, if you remember, was that the facility expanded into other buildings, how potential parking shortfalls would be addressed. There was also discussion regarding the applicant providing a future overall parking study to discuss any possible parking issues, which could then lead to a potential variance if there was necessitated. Subsequent to the use permit, the applicant secured additional buildings, aid in totality. One of the key purchases was the acquisition of the former Costco building and its associated parking. The Costco purchase provided the applicant approximately 650 additional stalls to contribute to the business campus, or the office campus. Also, the applicant was able to enter into an agreement for a large piece of property located directly across the street at the southeast corner of Dakota and Peach, which is down on the lower left-hand side, which shows gap parking. When this parking field is developed, the applicant will have an additional 680 parking stalls for the DSS campus. In summary, the Department of Social Services will incorporate approximately 604,000 square feet of building at full operation. Parking for the use is typically based on a parking ratio of four per thousand square feet of building as required by the Development Code. So that being said, the use would typically require 2,418 parking stalls that are on-site. In preparation for this, the applicant has provided staff with two parking study scenarios. First, the applicant hired the Peters Engineering Group to perform a technical study on parking. The firm used general data from the two DSS uses currently under operation. The data concluded that the parking demand rate came at 3.06 stalls per thousand square feet of building, which is below the four per thousand required by code. Second, the applicant's engineer used Institute of Transportation Engineer's Manual to further solidify the parking demands the overall DSS campus would require. The result of this ITE manual showed parking demands on approximately three stalls per thousand, which also confirms that the use doesn't exceed any parking requirements. In general, utilizing the professional parking studies prepared by a licensed traffic agency, coupled with the ITE manual support of these parking calcs, the overall use technically provides an excess of approximately 792 parking stalls. The use permit as presented would provide the applicant the flexibility to expand the campus if necessary without creating a detriment to park, impact to the overall parking areas. So in conclusion, as the use provides a huge benefit to the community and is a great adaptive reuse of vacant buildings, staff could support the approval of CUP 2019-014. This completes our summary, and I am available for any questions.
Do we have any questions, staff?
A couple of them, Commissioner Cunningham. We spoke before the meeting. I'm interested in the call, potential calls for service from Clovis PD in this particular area. As I see it, using the figures presented to us, it would be approximately 22 additional calls for service per month average. My question would be, how does that compare to our high calls for service now Walmart North and Walmart?
Okay. As indicated by the Police Department, there's 262 calls per service at the time they did their study. Well, we had an opportunity to look at the Walmarts, the Walmart South and Walmart North. Walmart South, which is the Shaolin Peach Walmart, is 925 cost per service per year, whereas the Walmart North at Clovis and Hern is 345 cost per service, so this would be less than those.
Okay, that's great. The only other question that I had just popped up, looking at that map, are we spanning a couple of geopolitical boundaries there? Is the additional parking at the south end of the complex, is that in another jurisdiction other than the City of Clovis?
Yeah. That triangular section at the bottom of the screen that says gap parking is actually located in the City of Fresno. We received the agreements and cross-agreements from the City of Fresno in property owner consent form to allow Cook Land Company to pursue this as a parking field to be utilized for the DSS campus.
So should we apply any additional conditions tonight that would also impact that area in the City of Fresno?
We will work closely with the City of Fresno on this project, and I'm sure that's what the Cook Land Company would prefer as well. So we will be commenting on that and make sure there's adequate access and that it is completed for the requirements. And if they also address any pedestrian crosses that need to be happening there.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
I had the same question, but my question is, it's an issue that we will not be discussing tonight as a commission.
Regarding the parking or the access?
Yes, that's something between planning and the City of Fresno.
That is correct. We will be working with the City of Fresno in cooperation with the applicant.
So it's not an issue with any thing that we discuss and decisions we make tonight?
Correct. We will handle that through the site plan review process.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Betstead, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, is the applicant here? Do you want to go ahead and go? And can you make sure and turn the third button so it turns the mic on? There you go.
Yes, Johannes here with Cook Land Company. No, we do not. At the same time, just want to inform the Planning Commissioners that we have submitted the site plan review package to City of Fresno for the parking lot south of Dakota, which is within the City of Fresno jurisdiction. The site plan review has been routed through various departments, including Fresno Floor Control District, Air Police and Control District, County of Fresno, and City of Clovis will also get a chance to comment and coordinate the site planned comments. Any other questions I can answer for Commissioners?
Yeah, I do. Commissioner Cunningham again. How many parking stalls do you anticipate creating at that southern boundary?
680.
680.
Yes, sir.
And will you be doing anything to improve the sidewalk or the crossing on Dakota between that lot and the central lot, I'll call it?
Yeah, I do not have the layout that I can share with you guys for now, but there is going to be sidewalk proposed for the city standard around the site and a crossing that will take the pedestrians to cross from the parking lot right to the entry of Building One, which is the public building. That crossing has been in concept, been laid out, presented to the City of Fresno as well as City of Clovis City Engineer with their staff. So it will be designed and properly constructed to make sure that existing signal at the intersections of Dakota and Peach not only legally able to allow the pedestrian to cross, but we are looking into supplemental crossing to even increase the safety of the crossing pedestrians.
Thank you on that. I know in the document that we have, page 28, on our packet number, speaks to bilingual signs by the drives and throughout the project. I've driven that project as late as this afternoon. I didn't see any bilingual signs. I saw some arrows pointing with English, but no bilinguality, if you will. What is planned or for giving guidance to the people that are there for the service?
Sure, we'll definitely take note of that. The wayfinding plan has been prepared, and it is still under review by not just us, but also City of Clovis prior to construction. So it is in the process of being reviewed, and we'll definitely look into the bilingual provisions.
Okay. And the last question that I have is trash and graffiti. As we all know, the 9/11 memorial is very close to that campus, and that's very near and dear to a lot of people's hearts, including mine.
Definitely.
In driving their current campus at the Shields-Milbrook intersection, I noticed graffiti on the buildings. That would be unacceptable to me, and I would be concerned. Is there plans to address that?
Sure. You want to stick with that? Okay. Good evening, Commissioners, Chair Hatcher, Todd Cook, Cook Land Company. Commissioner Cunningham, your comment got me out of my seat because I want you to know that, like you, the Cook family takes the California Memorial incredibly serious.
I'm well aware of that, yes.
We consider that sacred. We consider it an honor to have the ground that it is on. And I can tell you that the memorial has currently been piped into the live feed to Clovis PD, 24-hour monitoring with security cameras. And I remind you that the Cook Land Company will continue to maintain the property management of the entire facility. It is not going to be the County of Fresno. Cook Land Company is the manager, the property manager, the owner, and the county is the tenant. And I can assure you that Cook Land Company will not tolerate graffiti, and dare I say, if graffiti happens, it's down within 48 hours, if not sooner. That is something that my father started, that continues with me, that graffiti is unacceptable, and the best thing you can do is paint over it and get it taken care of, and the fastest they get it up, we get it down, and hopefully we'll see who lasts longer. But we've been around for 70 years running business, so I would give the nod to us.
Well, your response is very reassuring to me. Thank you, Mr. Cook. And you will be the owner, and county will be the tenant, so no one's going to lose any property taxes, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Commissioners?
Commissioner Betstead, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
While I'm here, I would just like to thank the staff. This has been a challenge. It's a big project, and we know there's not a lot of 600,000 square foot office projects going on. Staff has worked hard, the city's been responsive, and I would just like to publicly thank the city, from the council to the commission to staff on down. Planning Department's been great, economic development's been great, engineering's been great, and so we appreciate your continued support on this, what we feel is a great repurpose of a marquee property in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm now going to open it up to the public for anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this item. If you do wish to speak tonight, we ask you to keep your comments to five minutes, and please provide your first and last name, spelling your last name, and give your address for the record. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Maria, do we have anyone online?
There is no one online.
Okay. Do we have anyone here to speak in opposition of this item?
There's no opposition.
Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public portion, bring it back to the Commission. Do we have any follow-up questions?
I would like to thank the Cook Company and all the work they have done to bring all of these departments, county departments, together. It is going to make doing business with the County of Fresno in these social divisions so much easier instead of driving all over town and areas that you may not want to be in, where you would feel comfortable being in some of these areas after 5 o'clock or at 5 o'clock, and also at 8:00 in the morning. But thank you for all of your hard work. I just want to let you know, I think this is a great, great idea, job that they've done, and I'm for it.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'd like to echo Commissioner Hinkle's response to the Cook Land Company. I have dealt with them during the creation of the 9/11 memorial and very appreciative of all their hard work. It's a beautiful campus, by the way, this current project. I think it will be too much to streamline service the county will provide to the Department of Social Services and their clientele. I think it's laudable, and I'm prepared to make a motion.
Before we do that, Mr. Cook, do you have any final rebuttal by any chance? I didn't ask you that.
I would consider the rebuttal. The rebuttal, I appreciate it, it was a lot of testimony, Apple, which is really important to the community. And it's been, I appreciate you recognizing, you know, if this is a valid thing.
Thank you. Commissioner Betstead, do you have any final comments?
Yeah, I would just echo the comments from my fellow Commissioners, and I also appreciate, as Commissioner Cunningham expressed, the commitment to care for the 9/11 memorial there and the resiliency that Mr. Cook expressed to making sure that any damages to those facilities would be taken care of immediately. So I like the project, and I am in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd be happy to make a motion to approve conditional use permit 2019-014.
A second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Hinkle, to approve CUP 2019-014. Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Betstead?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes. Moving on to the next item. Consider items associated with approximately 52 acres of land located in the southeast area of Leonard and Barstow Avenues. Glenn Milholland and Darlene Milholland, trustees of the Milholland Family Trust, property owners, Bonne Delee Neighborhoods applicant, Harbor and Associates representative. Item A, consider approval, a request to approve an environmental finding of a mitigated negative declaration for general plan amendment GPA 2020-001, pre-zone R 2020-001, investing tentative track map TM 6304. Item B, consider approval, GPA 2020-001, a request to amend the general plan to re-designate approximately 34 acres from the low-density residential 2.1 to 4 dwelling units per acre classification to the medium-density residential 4.1 to 7 dwelling units per acre classification. Item C, consider approval, R 2020-001, a request to pre-zone approximately 34 acres from the County AE 20 Exclusive Agricultural Zone District to the Clovis R1 PRD Single Family Plan Residential Development, and approximately 18 acres from the County AE 20 Exclusive Agricultural to the Clovis O Open Space Conservation Zone District. Item D, consider approval, TM 6304, a request to approve a vesting tentative track map for a 217-lot, single-family subdivision on approximately 34 acres of land. Staff?
Good evening, Chair Hatcher, members of the Commission. So first, I'd like to point out that I did provide you guys with two supplements. One came in yesterday afternoon, dated June 24th, and that included some additional public comments that had been received following publication of the staff report, as well as some revised conditions of approval, as well as a description of a neighborhood meeting that we had just last week with some of the neighbors. I also provided another supplement to you a few hours ago, dated June 25th, and that was in regards to some additional public comments that we had received throughout today as well. So the project location is, as you can see on here, is where the star is located. The shaded green is where the current sphere of influence is for the City of Clovis, as well as where the blue line is, is the existing city limit. As part of this project, as indicated in your staff report, if approved, the applicant would seek to annex the property within the city limits. So essentially, that blue line around the star would extend all the way out along the green line and kind of square it off right there. So focusing in a little bit more on the site, the total parcel itself is actually 52 acres. However, for purposes of tonight's discussion, the actual project area where the development is proposed is on the shaded part, which is approximately 34 acres. Although the additional 18 acres that's unshaded would be included in the annexation and be pre-zoned to the Open Space Conservation District, there wouldn't actually be any development as part of this project. So for purposes that tonight, we're really just talking about the shaded area. So GPA 2020-001 is a request by the applicant to go from the low-density residential land designation to the medium-density residential, and that general plan designation would only apply again to the shaded area. The green area that you see up there, park and open space, would remain in their existing land use designation, so those would not be changed as part of this. They're also requesting a pre-zone, as mentioned. Again, the shaded area would go to an R1 PRD if approved, and the green would go to Open Space Conservation, which would bring that zoning into consistency with the land use designation if approved and subsequently annexed into the city. So track map 6304, as you can see here, I wanted to highlight some of the key features. It's 217 single-family lots. The average lot size would be about 4,700 square feet. Thank you. That's good. There'd also be included a public park space, kind of a linear park there you see along the top of the screen there, as pointed out with those red arrows. The development would have sidewalks all throughout, so anywhere in front of a house, along the park, there'd be sidewalks. There would be public streets. They would be constructed to city standards, so there'd be sufficient room for parking on both sides. There'd also be a vehicular bridge there that would have to be constructed, and that would kind of serve as the main access point to the project, and that bridge would go over the existing Dog Creek. The garages would also be EV-capable, as well as the homes would include solar, which is consistent with Cal Green Building Code standards. And as well as the garages would also be standard size, the 20 by 20. Josh? The clicker stopped. Yeah, there we go. Sorry about that, we're having technical difficulties. So in terms of public outreach, when we have GPAs, our city policy requires that the applicant hold two neighborhood meetings, one prior to planning commission and then another after planning commission, prior to city council. In this case, the applicant did hold one back in February 24th of this year. We also had an initial meeting at a neighbor's residence just this past Friday evening to address some of the concerns, as well as there's been some email and verbal correspondence over the phone with several of the neighbors throughout the past few weeks. I would like to kind of highlight and thank both the neighbor's participation and the applicant's willingness. I think it's been a good process in terms of getting together and trying to address the concerns. And I'll talk about some of the concerns that came up here in a little bit. But it seems that they've come to agreement or concessions on a lot of things. You know, admittedly, they haven't come to agreement on everything, but I think the process itself is something that should be applauded by both the neighbors and the applicant for their efforts. So some of the main concerns that came up were regarding the neighborhood noticing policy, the fencing between the properties to the east, which is in the county, so rural residential properties, the location of a second point of access that would be required as part of the project, water drainage, the height of homes, as well as the density. So starting with the neighborhood noticing, again, to reiterate, our policy is that it's an applicant-led effort in terms of reaching out to the neighbors and hosting that meeting. Typically, city staff will be invited and attend those meetings, and in this case, we did. The city did provide the applicant with the address list within 800 feet of the project site. Per the applicant, notices were mailed out in advance, and that meeting was held. Concerns were centered really due to the lack of information in the notice. In the supplement that you have before you today, there was a comment letter that actually showed the postcard, so you could see what was sent out, so if you want to refer to that, you certainly can. In order to kind of address this issue, even though our policy now doesn't require city staff to actually review or send out or be responsible for those notices, we are going to start looking at working on some internal guidelines so that we can have a little bit more oversight about the content, so that we don't have this issue in the future. With regards to fencing, really, it has to do with the fencing along the eastern property line, which is where the proposed homes would go and where some of the rural residential county residents are. Generally speaking, our code standard is for a six-foot minimum wood fence if it's residential to residential. Block walls are usually only required if they're along some kind of collector, higher-classification street system, or if they're adjacent to a trail. In this case, the property is actually surrounded all by local streets, so the actual city standard is a six-foot minimum wood, which is what staff had conditioned on the applicant. In the efforts in meeting with the neighbors, the applicant has offered to construct a masonry wall if the neighbors are willing to share the added cost above what the minimum cost would be for that wood fence. So the applicant can speak to that more if they'd like to. The other kind of topic that came up, that come up in the discussions with the neighborhood meetings, is that developments are required to have two points of access. The second point of access would be required to come out the south of the tract map, which I'll show you on the next slide, which would run through an existing tract map that was previously approved, that is owned by a different property owner. So the applicant is working currently with that property owner at the south. They have the road, the final alignment of that road for that other track mapped out, and ideally, that road would be constructed in its final alignment. However, and if agreement can't be reached there, then the road would have to jog over along the eastern property line, as you see here. So if you can kind of see right here, the final alignment, based on this tract map, would be further away from these residents down this way and then connect to Shaw. If the applicant isn't able to reach an agreement with that owner, the temporary access alignment would likely jog over this way, which would be a little bit closer to these residents here. So at this point, we don't have the actual alignment set in stone or where that's going. The applicant, like I said, is actively working with the property owner at the south. So this is just kind of a closer-up image of that. And one thing to point out is, these rural residential properties are quite large. And if the temporary alignment were to follow along this eastern property line that you see there in the red, the actual distance to structures, depending on the house that you see there along the east, is anywhere from, you know, probably 140 to 160 feet. If you take the distance from the property line to where the temporary access road may go, you're looking at anywhere from about 40 to 50 feet. So it's still a considerable distance away, even if that roadway had to go there. And I think it's worth noting that if the temporary alignment has to go in, it would be temporary. So the hope is that when this property at the south develops, that final alignment would be there, and then the temporary access road would go away. So some concerns came up about the water drainage. Currently, right now, the rural residential properties to the east all have drainage basins to capture their water. There was some concern about either the proposed project affecting their water drainage somehow. All that we can say is that when these projects go through, they're reviewed by both our city engineers, Fresno Metropolitan Flood Control District, and they're heavily engineered to ensure that no flood impacts would occur. So presumably, there would be no drainage impacts. In terms of the heights of the homes, as you know, the city of Clovis permits a maximum height of 35 feet for residential properties. The project would comply with the city standard. They're not asking for anything higher than that. And although I haven't seen their site plan reviews on their final design of the homes, I believe that the second stories actually do come in even a little bit less than that. Through discussions with the neighbors, the applicant has agreed to voluntarily restrict to single-story homes on about, I believe, 18 to 20 properties along the eastern property line, which is shown in one of the previous maps. So they're voluntarily restricting those to single-story to help with some of the privacy concerns. In terms of the density, although there's a request to increase, you know, from low to medium density, I wanted to kind of show the math a little bit to kind of give you an idea of really what that means. You know, under the existing low-density, the maximum number of units allowed there would be 136 approximately. Under the medium, at the upper range, 238 would be the maximum allowed. The applicant's requesting 217, which is actually below the, slightly below the maximum that would be permitted under the requested medium-density designation. And I also want to highlight the fact that the original proposal when the applicant came in was for 285 units, and they were actually seeking a general plan amendment to go to medium-high density. But to address the neighbor concerns regarding that, they increased the lot size and they reduced the number of units from their original request by 68. So that cut them down to 217 units. So in summary, I just want to say, you know, the project meets many of the goals in policies of the general plan and Loma Vista-specific plan, as you saw earlier in the city limit line. This really kind of squares off that boundary to kind of finish that piece of the puzzle up there in terms of bringing that land into the city. The project would be constructed to city standards. And, you know, again, the applicant and the neighbors have worked really closely to address many of the concerns, which included single-story lot restrictions, reduced number of units overall, increased lot sizes, as well as reduced density. And we also just wanted to make, you know, kind of highlight here, the applicant will be sending out the neighborhood meeting notices for the second neighborhood meeting this week or early next week, but it will be on Monday, July 13th, at their Grove Model Complex at Barstow and Leonard, which is right near the project. And city council for the project is tentatively scheduled for July 20th. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission consider approval of the environmental finding, consider approval of GPA 2020-001, per the amended conditions in the supplement, as well as consider approval for a rezone 2020-001, and consider approval of tract map 6304. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions with staff?
Sorry, Commissioner Cunningham, this is Brandon jumping in here. Ricky, I do have a quick question. I can't recall the exact slide you were on, but it was the, it was the map with the legend that had all of the numbers.
Yeah, I'll go back to it right now. There we go.
There we go.
That's fine.
Yes, sir. So on number seven, masonry perimeter wall, I see a handful of those reflected there. Can you elaborate on exactly what will be built for a masonry perimeter wall there? It looks like those are relatively spread out.
Yeah, so the masonry walls would be placed at the locations where a side yard is adjacent to where the park space is. So anywhere where you see the park space, that's going to be the masonry wall. The properties along the Dog Creek area would have a combination or some kind of wrought iron or tubular steel fence to be able to give people a view of, you know, Dog Creek and the open space behind it. But in terms of the, where you see the number 10 there, as well as where the single-story homes are, which would be the eastern property line, that requirement, per standard, would be a six-foot wood fence as a minimum.
Thank you for clarifying that. And yes, I did understand where it's adjacent to the current rural development. Thank you, Ricky.
Yep.
Just a quick question on the primary floodplain. I note in the site plan, it shows that lots 1 through 12 are inside the primary floodplain and it is designated under page 113 as a substantial risk. But as I understand it, having had conversation with city engineer, that this is just at the beginning of the process, and there will be much mitigation discussed over the primary floodplain and how to reduce the risk. Is that correct?
That's correct. They would have to go through a process through FEMA permitting to make sure that there's adequate drainage there, even though those particular lots would be in the floodplain. If Shawn wants to add anything more, engineer will defer in.
There is a lot of details we could add, but basically, in the end, there's a lot of practice, a lot of procedures, and a lot of steps to make sure that those homes are protected when we're done.
All right, thank you. That answers many of the questions that I had. Yeah, that covers it all. Thank you.
I have a few questions here. The reduction of number of homes in this project, does that affect our RENA numbers for the city of Clovis?
This project, this project right here, we wouldn't get any credit in terms of RENA, so it doesn't have any effect, one way or the other, just by nature of the density.
Okay. I read in here, too, that the developer is responsible for all landscaping. Is that in front of houses and everything through the whole project?
No, well, the common areas, so they would enter into a landscape maintenance district where the homes are assessed at a small fee that goes to city maintaining that park. So the city maintains it, but the fees come from the development overall. In terms of the front yard maintenance, it'd be no different than any other residential home where you're responsible for your own front yard.
Okay, I was a little confusing there. In the park area, currently, there's homes there. What's going to happen to those homes? How is that going to be governed? How are we going to turn it into a park down the road?
It's a great question. So if you're referring to the 18 acres up here on the other side of Dog Creek, there's nothing being proposed right now as part of this project. The hope is that it's, you know, planned for a future city park. So whenever we have enough money to, hopefully, one day, purchase and build it out, we'll do so. But in terms of what's going to happen right now, the home would remain as is. And, you know, as far as I know, nothing's planned in terms of anybody moving out or relocating unless they choose to later. But in terms of this project, this project won't affect it at all, other than rezoning it to, pre-zoning it to open space.
So if I currently live there, I could sell my house today?
Yes.
Okay, and not to the city, but to somebody else?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. We had talked in the past that if I'm driving around through projects, that between the driveway and the access to the five-foot side yard, I'll possibly, making the developer pave that. Is that something that's going to be considered on this? Because my observation in homeowners putting bark in and stuff, they would not drag their totes across the bark. They were left on the garage or the driveway all week long. So is that something that you guys have looked at in possibly incorporating into this? Making the developer pave through the gate?
In this particular project, and right now, we don't have a current mechanism for requiring the paving there. If the applicant, you know, chooses to do so, they certainly can. But in terms of requiring that, we don't have a mechanism. Something we can look at doing, you know, as a broader, you know, policy change or making it part of the development code. But as of now, we don't have that as a required standard.
Yeah, it's something I'd like to see, because in driving around through all these new developments and with the environmental problems, that we see more trash totes in the driveways because they do not want to disturb the bark, or they can't pull it through the bark.
Right.
So it's something that I'd sure like to see you guys look at and possibly incorporate into future developments. It's going to help us keep the way we would like the neighborhoods to look.
Sure, we can certainly do that.
On the temporary turnabout on the south end of Hermosa, is that, is that going to be put in this project? Or is it, the turnabout going to be in the tract map to the south?
So eventually, you know, when the tract map to the south builds, the thought is that it will connect there. But for now, it'll remain a sub-street.
Okay. And then the temporary access will be off of La Rose Avenue?
Yeah, it'll be off of La Rose, just down here.
Yeah, okay. And what happens if they don't come to an agreement on access from the south? That they come to a stalemate? Will that road still be put in somehow? Is there some type of way to put that in? Or would that stop the development?
We have, yeah, I mean, we do have a condition for a second point of access. So it's temporary alignment of some kind, or temporary access is going to have to go in one way or another. I'm sure the applicant can speak to it more if they like. It sounds like they have a pretty good relationship with the owner to the south, so it feels like they're confident that something will happen. So at this point, I don't have any doubts, or there hasn't been any indication that some kind of access road wouldn't occur.
What would happen if, for some reason, it was not allowed?
We either have to go back and look for some other option, or they may have to wait until the development to the south does go in, so.
Okay, I just wanted to get that into the records, so that everybody understood the possibilities, what could happen in the future. That's all I have. Thank you.
Is the applicant?
Pardon me. And I'm looking at page 114 in my packet. It's the tract map 6304. It's the track map 6304 player map. And I note in there that there appears to be one parcel at the southwestern corner. And it's a parcel that's really attached to track 6181. And if the track 6304 is constructed the way this map shows, it appears as though that parcel is going to be landlocked, that there will be no access. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, so that did come up, and one of the things that we've conditioned is that on the revised map, that they show a conceptual lotting plan for this. So likely what's going to happen is these three lots that you see appear as part of 6181 will be shown as extending out, being larger lots. So that's something that we've addressed with the applicant.
So they'll have access to?
Yeah, it'll have access of some kind, and we've conditioned that as such, and the applicant's aware of that, so.
All right, thank you.
Good. I now bring it up to the applicant.
Good evening. Microphone's on?
Yeah.
My name's John Bonadelli, 7030 North Fruit, number 101. We agree with staff's recommendation for approval, and I'd like to thank Ricky and the staff for all their efforts to date. There's two points we'd like to discuss tonight to the planning commission. Number one would be the merits and the benefits of our requested general plan amendment to the city of Clovis. And secondly, my father would like to expand on our neighborhood outreach efforts throughout this planning process for track 6304. We feel the merits and the benefits of the city of Clovis for allowing slightly higher densities are as follows. First and foremost is public safety. As you can see, track 6304, the western edge borders Dog Creek. Dog Creek is the riparian area that bisects this parcel. And on the other side of Dog Creek is the future regional Loma Vista 20-acre park site. By allowing this requested GPA, Clovis will feel less of a strain on its law enforcement services. Our proposed slightly smaller lot sizes will bring more eyeballs to the area running along Dog Creek and the future park, as opposed to the small number of oversized lots there would be under the current density designation. This increased lot count along Dog Creek will allow for neighbors to aid law enforcement by helping to monitor this area and call in any suspicious activity instead of law enforcement needing to dedicate additional resources to patrol this large, public, open space. This will benefit Clovis law enforcement and all of the surrounding Clovis and county residents. We will achieve this by backing more two-story homes along the majority of lots along Dog Creek. And as Ricky mentioned earlier, we are requesting to build aesthetic wrought iron fencing along Dog Creek as well, for neighbors to enjoy the view of Dog Creek and also to help Clovis monitor these large, open spaces. Secondly, this general plan amendment on this site will bring more units. More units creates more users with smaller yards that will want to use the future regional park site more frequently, as opposed to lower-density units with bigger backyards. This slight unit increase will allow for us to create more affordable housing, which will allow for the opportunity for young Clovis families to become residents of Clovis. Younger families will have more children that will utilize the future park site, along with the entire Loma Vista master plan parks and trail system. Regarding the unit count, Loma Vista is approaching near completion with over 60% residential buildout, and most of the undeveloped residential parcels are already entitled. This parcel is one of the last remaining major residential parcels in the specific plan. There's a chance that Loma Vista actual unit count does not match the original projected unit count for the specific plan. This project will help Clovis to reconcile with the original unit projection count, while also meeting statewide housing requirements for greater density throughout all of California. Furthermore, these additional units will create more users for commercial centers throughout Clovis, notably the Sierra Vista Mall and other major retailers within the city. As you can see, this is an odd-shaped parcel. It's shaped a bit like the state of Idaho, the reverse shape of Idaho. There's a long neck to the property, there's a long neck of the property in the northern portion. If we were to create, if we were to build at the current density, we'd create very narrow, odd-shaped lots in that northern neck of the property that would not be efficiently designed. They would not be water efficient, or efficient use of water for homeowners, and it would be difficult for these property owners to maintain. This slight two-and-a-half unit per acre increase allows for a much more efficient layout to this property. The fact that this is one of the few remaining major residential parcels available and undeveloped within Loma Vista speaks to the difficulty to effectively engineer and develop this property. By engineering this property with our current proposed layout and requested GPA, we're able to construct a community with more realistically affordable price points for Clovis residents. Also, by developing this property, as Ricky mentioned earlier, we will be constructing a bridge that spans over Dog Creek. Allowing for this general plan amendment creates a more feasible development, allowing us to develop this bridge. This bridge will connect Shaw Avenue to Barstow Avenue more efficiently and will be a key transportation cog within the growing Loma Vista area. It will allow for county and city residents to more efficiently access community medical center, retail centers along Herndon Avenue, and Clovis Unified School sites. It will also help to relieve traffic congestion in the area. We are also proposing to build two pocket parks within the development that are on the western edge, looking over Dog Creek and the future regional park. Both of these parks are strategically positioned along that western edge so that they can also overlook and monitor the future regional park, and also provide two overlooks for future Clovis residents and current Clovis residents to enjoy for years to come. As Ricky mentioned earlier, this community is also designed to be extremely pedestrian-friendly, with sidewalks on both sides of the street. And these pedestrians will use these sidewalks to access the two parks within the community, the Greater Regional Park and the entire trail system. We'll also design this community with full-length driveways, two-code garage sizes on our houses, and the homes will be constructed with solar and electrical vehicle-ready. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we'll touch on the neighborhood outreach efforts that we made.
Good evening. John Bonadelli, 7030 North Fruit. I think I'll start off and address a couple of your inquiries. I don't have a problem installing the garage tote sidewalk. I'll just, it's not a requirement, like Ricky said. But we're trying to be good partners with the city of Clovis on this plan amendment. We understand it's a plan amendment. We think it's the best design and the best use of this property for the city of Clovis. And I have no problem with the garage, we have no problem with the garage totes. The second question or inquiry you brought up was the access road. If we don't get the access road, we don't build the project. It's very simple. And we're, we understand that. I have a very good relationship with the property owner, had lunch with him today to the south. I believe we can work that out. So having addressed that now, I'd like to, as you guys know, we've started this process back in February. We, because it's a plan amendment, we're required to have neighborhood meetings. But, you know, we've done this forever in this town. And neighborhood meetings, no problem. I don't mind it. I like to be a good neighbor. And I don't mind bringing in the neighborhood as part of the design process, especially if they're, they'll point out things to me that I didn't see. And, you know, we can make a better, a better neighborhood for them, for us, and our customers. So, but when you do a plan amendment, you're required to do two meetings. So we had our first one back in February. Some of the, I think, three families showed up. Two of them were from the Shaw Avenue estates. When we do these meetings, we never know what we're going to get. We send the notices out. Sometimes you get 100, I've had 140 people at a meet. I've had hundreds of people. We had to move from here to the Veterans Center. We had so many people for a project 20, 30 years ago. Recently, we did a project in Fresno. We sent out the notice. We had two people show up. So we just, we don't know. We can't really gauge what we're going to get. But we had some residents from Shaw Estates, and they had some concerns. And our goal is, I mean, you know, maybe I'm different from other home builders. I'm sure they feel the same way. But our goal is 100% satisfaction from the neighbors. Whether they are a county resident outside this sphere, or whether they're a city of Clovis resident, we understand that this is going to have some impact, and we're going to try to do our best, you know, to, to design a neighborhood that's going to satisfy them. So we, we had our first meeting, and we started to address concerns back in February. And then after the meeting, the way it goes is you get the phone calls and the emails, and a request to go to their home and walk the site with them. No problem. No problem. We did that. Then in the last couple of weeks, some of the neighbors, additional neighbors, didn't read, didn't catch in the mail, the mailman lost it. I don't, I don't know. I, you know, all I know is we mail them out, and, and no problem. I mean, this was two or three weeks ago when, when they started inquiring. So we said, okay, they're going to have another neighborhood meeting. I said, my son and I will gladly attend, and Ricky was great. Ricky dropped everything on a Friday night, and we went out there at nine o'clock and met with, with the neighbors. Another, you know, six or seven property owners, some of which we'd already met with. No problem. So we met with them. We heard their concerns. If you pull up a map of the Shaw Avenue Estates, there's eight property owners, I could probably name them all, along our property and the track map to the south. There's only four on our property. So I've met with, my son and I have met with, we've met with them onsite. We've talked to them. We've emailed them, and they had some concerns. I don't want to go into details. We did some redesigning. We did some concessions with, with walls. We did some promises of building single stories, so not to have them worry about somebody looking into their backyard, where their pool is and their kids. And we also, we changed the design of the project. We lowered the density because they were concerned about that. I mean, we did the best we could, but you guys know how it is. Look, you sit down at Thanksgiving dinner with your family, not everybody's going to agree. You could try your best, but not everybody's going to agree on everything, and that's fine. Everyone's got their own opinion. But surprisingly, surprisingly, I, I can't tell you how many, and we added them. And we have letters of support from a lot, many of the Shaw Avenue Estates. I want to say a majority, but I just don't know because I was literally on the phone with them on the way over here, different residents, and trying to address their concerns. In a perfect world, we can make everybody happy, but sometimes you can't. Even Mr. Miller, Larry, he's going to come up and talk about his antenna. And I told him on the phone, we had a nice hour-long conversation a couple of days ago. He's a very nice gentleman. He's an engineer, so he's very detailed. But, you know, we'll work with him on his antenna so that we don't mess up his Wi-Fi. And we're going to build a single story in the light of direction of his radio tower to Owens Mountain. But to date, we've had three neighborhood meetings with staff. I've had countless, my son and I have had countless meetings onsite with the neighbors. I can't tell you how many phone calls and emails. And I'm not complaining, but I just want to point out that we're doing our best, and we're only required to do one neighborhood meeting. And really, we're not even required to do that meeting if we wouldn't have asked for the plan amendment. We feel strongly about the plan amendment. We feel strongly about this project. We think it's a good project, and it fits so well with that regional park and that Dog Creek open space and the future trail. It's, it's the, it's the perfect design, putting those two stories back there. It will be a benefit for Clovis, and we're really, we're really excited about it. We have another neighborhood meeting scheduled because that's the requirement, and that's fine. I think we're at diminishing returns point on the meetings. But we're going to go, and we're going to try to address any new concerns that come up. You know, whatever it takes within reason that we can do. So it's been, it's been a long process since February. But like I said, I, I'm very happy with the letters of support we have from, you know, many of the neighbors. Again, even the ones that are maybe not, are opposed to the project. Many I've known for forever. Our kids went to school together. Nice people. And I think they feel the same way about us, but we may not agree on everything. But, but we did our best to try. I hope you allow us the opportunity to come back up and address any issues that get brought up that, you know, we're not quite sure about. And I can answer any questions for you if you'd like right now.
Do you have any questions? Commissioner Bedstead, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. No questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd now like to open it up to the public for anyone here willing, wishing to speak in favor of this item?
Chair Haltrow, if I may interrupt, we did receive a letter of correspondence that they'd like written to the record or read into the record. May I proceed with that? So we received an email from a Mr. Jeff and Don Lynn Suglian. It says, "Thank you for allowing us to submit the following comments concerning the Bonadelli Residential Subdivision Track 6304, which is adjacent and parallel to the two-acre parcel properties of the existing rural residential development at Shaw Highland. My wife and I reside at 5389 North Highland. We have attended two meetings, February 24, 2020, at Red Bank Elementary, and June 19, 2020, at the Kemp residence regarding the proposed 52-acre development. Local developers John Bonadelli, John A. Bonadelli, and Ricky Capperton, ASCP, were present at both meetings. We have resided in our residence for over 21 years, some of our neighbors for over 25 years. My and my wife's initial concerns centered on the high-density housing originally proposed abutting our property as well as our neighbors' properties, and the probability of two-story homes overlooking our backyards and residences. The Bonadellas considered our concerns and modified the track plan, designating a more modest, medium-density lot layout in addition to stipulating only single-level elevations along our shared property lines per the condition to track 6304. We are thankful for the dialogue and resulting changes to track 6304. It appears to better fit the congru- congruity and air environment, to the extent that it can, of our rural setting and way of life. In summary, we certainly prefer that our rural living remain untouched by tract home development. Yet, the reality is land development behind our properties is inevitable. The Bonadellas appear to be willing to attempt to reduce the impact of a density populated city neighborhood on our quiet country way of living. They are aware of our additional concerns and appear to be addressing lighting and the property line buried between the two developments. Preferably a better buffer than wood fencing, pending additional input from the city of Clovis. We appreciate the communication with John, John A., and Ricky, and hope to continue to have further positive and productive dialogue moving forward during the building and development processes and in addressing future concerns affecting our residences."
Thank you. Do we have anyone here wanting to speak in favor of this item? Maria, do you have anyone online?
We do not.
Okay. Then do we have anyone here wishing to speak against this item? If so, can you go to the podium and state your first and last name and your address?
I hope because I have face shields, I can take off this. Is that okay? Thank you. My name is Betty Cap, and I live at 5333 North Highland Avenue. Thank you for your time and attention, and for all you do to make sure that the city is planning for new neighborhoods to be compatible with existing neighborhoods. A very wise neighbor believes that the city of Clovis has already given Mr. Bonadelli the green light on his project, and that this meeting is just a formality. I hope he's not correct. I'm concerned that the city is not doing enough to protect the current residents. For example, Mr. Bonadelli supposedly sent us a postcard. You'll notice, you'll notice it has an A on it, on February 6. However, it doesn't have his name on it. It doesn't have a map. And the only way that we know what property he's referring to is if you knew, know where Awadulset is. And Awadulset doesn't go through to Shaw. So consequently, the only person that knew about the meeting called the number on the bottom, and that's the only way they knew, oh, this is the Bonadelli Development, and he told the people across the street. The rest of us don't remember even getting this postcard. Does the city consider this a sincere attempt to notify us about the meeting? I didn't think so, and so I questioned Mr. Ricky Capperton in regards to this. And you'll see, his response is- see his response is entitled uppercase B. He writes, sorry, I need my glasses closed. "I understand your concerns and I've addressed the issue with the applicant. The city is working on coming up with standard guidelines to prevent this from occurring in the future. The guidelines would refine what minimum information is required on future meeting notices. Well, I'm thinking about all those past landowners that didn't have the benefit of realizing that this was done. I'm appalled that there hasn't been a standard established as yet. To the outside observer, it appears that the protocol that the city has for new residential development may be flawed. Additionally, I'm confused about the fact that you're combining three things together. I've been counseled that usually you either do the zoning or you do the map or you do the environmental reports. It seems like something is being rushed at our expense." Because we didn't, we, excuse me, we'd like to know what minimum number of meetings are required for the builder that he's supposed to organize because we don't think we should count the first meeting because we didn't know about it. And I organized the second meeting and Mr. Bonadelli really wanted to attend that meeting so he could come here tonight and tell you that he went to several meetings. As the gatekeepers to this lovely city, we request that you consider giving property owners that are rural residential the courtesy of putting low residential homes next to I'm so grateful for the opportunity to speak to you today. We are requesting a continuance on this plan because we don't feel that we had adequate notice to get all our neighbors' input and we would like more time to work with our tentative future neighbor, John Bonadelli, on a better map so that we're all as happy as he thinks we are. We'd like this to stay the Clovis way of life, not Fresno way of life where Mr. Bonadelli resides or the LA way of life where they will fix as many homes on a piece of property as possible. We know that that is not the Clovis way of life and his plan right now has at least six and a half homes behind our one home and our residents, our plots are really long, but they're not deep and I frankly don't want to hear six different dogs barking in my backyard. Thanks again."
Do we have anyone else here who wants to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Commission, city staff. Thank you for allowing us to comment on the proposed Track 6304. My name is Larry Miller. My wife and I live at 5157 North Highland Avenue and have enjoyed the Clovis way of life for the last 32 years. This is an extremely complex development with many factors to consider and we understand how easily it is to overlook the details that may be important to many of us. I would like to digress from, and by the way, I had sent out my comments, I will be digressing from those somewhat, so I hope some of this can be read into the record. For the Bonadellis, did I understand correctly that if you cannot secure the path through the orchard, that the project doesn't go? That makes a big difference and it kind of takes rid of some of my objections here. But I would like to speak to what Betty talked about regarding the meeting notice. We didn't know about it until after we started digging into this thing when we got the notice two weeks ago. I think that February meeting notice was misleading, quite simply. We have, five or six of us right in a row on the west side never noticed or got the meeting. It looked like junk mail, we don't always read everything. We have requested a list of people that that notification was sent to, but it has not been, we have not received it. So we don't know if it was mailed to everyone and we all missed it or we didn't get the Now, when we learned about this project about two weeks ago, we reached out to Mr. Ricky Caperton and he was responsive, the Bonadellis attempted to respond and we have been scrambling to get a handle on what's going on in this project. We do believe though that this thing should, as Betty mentioned, it should be perhaps delayed until some of these items are resolved. In the mitigated declaration, I have some objections. That study repeatedly compared the proposed developments to the areas northwest of this new development and the Track 6123 to the south. It pretty much ignored the rural residential area that we live in. Page 48, 49 talks about noise levels. All urban areas are noisier than rural areas. This development would drastically increase noise levels to the east. The temporary road, which was my biggest objection, if that goes away, then that's not an issue. We just don't want temporary traffic on our back property line. The EIR states that the development is considered to have no impact on our neighborhood. The increased density is beyond the 2014 general plan. The general plan was subject to public review and quite frankly, it would appear that this rezoning enhanced, instead of enhancing the neighborhood, it enhances the developer. Of course, I understand he wants to make a living too. The traffic study indicates that there will be about over 2,000 daily vehicular trips generated in this traffic. If we could have that track map up on the plan, I don't know who's controlling the pointer, but if you show where that access road goes out, right there, the map shows it going, jogging over to the back of our property. And I would have to believe that if, of the people going west on Shaw Avenue or east of that development, probably half of them will travel out that direction, not through the zigzag course through the neighborhoods to the west. So there's going to be a lot of traffic that comes south and if he can move that to the west along Los Rosas, that's so much the better for us. I want to make another point, if I could have the first slide that I sent, are you controlling that?
Ricky is.
Ricky is, okay. I think they were out of order, can you go to the next one? It doesn't show up real well, but our residence is in that location where he's highlighted. We have an eight, about an eight and a third mile microwave pass at the top of Owens Mountain that has served us for unwired broadband for 11 years. Who would have thought it would last that long in this world of changing technology? Now, if you could go back to the other slide, you can see that line that crosses at a slight diagonal across the proposed property, that is the line of sight. And we have attempted to do all sorts of analysis, but we're kind of stymied because we don't know what the final grade elevation of his development will be. Right now, there's somewhere between six and 10 or 12 feet difference in elevation where my antenna is located in the corner of his property. And if, even if we, if he agrees to raise the antenna, we still have the potential of being blocked by trees. That was the only place we could get a clear path to get service. The neighbors' trees to the east of us got there before we did and so there was no way we could get through any other way. That is our lifeblood. We do traditional web and email access, telephone service, video surveillance monitoring, streaming video TV service and frequent video conferencing, probably at least two a week. My wife and I are both participants in nonprofit organizations. All of our meetings have gone online, so you know, that has become our life, our lifeline. There is no other service in our neighborhood. We do not have Comcast cable on our street, that would be prohibitively expensive. We're too far away from AT&amp;T's central office to get DSL. The wireless 4G data caps won't allow the amount of data that we're pushing over the internet connection at this time. Satellite services have data caps plus a lot of latency, which makes it much more awkward to video conference in that method. So we've had lots of discussions about that, we haven't come to an agreement, there are solutions, but we just haven't got there yet and I don't know where we go from here, but I feel that the very short notice that we had for this development and the fact that we haven't resolved all of the issues would be cause to delay it for a month or two or whatever. That's my position and I appreciate your listening to me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? If you want to go ahead and go. And if you can, if you guys can try to keep it to five minutes or less, we're kind of pushing our time.
My name is Paul McKinney, I live at 5277 North Highland. There is an unwired tower right across the street from me. I don't know why he doesn't hook onto that, okay? He, you know, and Mr. Bonadelli came out to the meeting, I was at the meeting the other night, I did not get notices on the other. I come in, when I first seen surveyors out there, I come to the City of Clovis and was asking questions. They told me I was way too early, you know, they would notify me when it was time. I see their problem more with the City of Clovis than with Mr. Bonadelli. I was at the meeting, I thought he was more than congenial with the people. He tried to every way help us out. I discussed the single stories with him, he said, "Sure." I discussed the block sets with him, we come to an agreement on it. Larry's property is on down the next where the almond orchard is. He was asking Mr. Bonadelli, he said, "I don't own the property." He's told him he's trying to put a road down through there. He's actually told him, "I'll move it 100 feet away if I can, so it's not close to your property line." I'm pleased, I've been a contractor for 45 years, I've lived there for 30 years. I feel that he's more than been, I mean, he's went out of his way to be helpful. I know that there are developers that if you get them in there, they're going to follow the line and I mean, they're going to do what they want to do no matter what you want, you know? And I'm looking forward to him being a good neighbor, I mean, he's trying hard there, pleased everybody. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak?
My name is Stephen Lee, I live at 5215 North Highland Avenue, last name LEE. And I live between, actually Paul, who is just up here, and Larry. And actually, we did have some concerns with it. I was not notified about the original meeting when Mr. Bonadelli came to the second meeting. He did a number of things that I thought a contractor would never do by making concessions on the single-story houses behind our property. And he even went to the point where the property behind were the next development over on the next track that has already been established that behind my house he would keep single-story houses. So all of those took place and I think he's done everything that he can possibly do to appease the neighbors that I live with on a daily basis and I've never seen a contractor ever do that because we went to a meeting here about, I don't know, it was probably seven or eight years ago and it went significantly different than this meeting has been with John Bonadelli. So I just want to say from our family's standpoint, he's done a lot to appease what we need and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak?
My name is Jeff Sulean from 5389 North Highland and I know you submitted a letter that was read earlier, I just want to reiterate the fact that obviously we enjoy our rural way of life out there and we wish we didn't have a development going behind us, but we knew that it's inevitable, there's going to be development. And I think that the Bonadellis have been working in good faith, have good partners, they've taken in our concerns and our input and have done all that they could do to address those concerns and we're very appreciative of that fact. And we hope moving forward, as this construction goes forward and the development goes forward, that they'll continue to work in good faith with us and that they'll continue to address concerns and that we expect and hope that if there's future development south of us in the almond orchard, that they'll continue to work in good faith with our neighbors on that end. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? Any none? Maria, do we have anyone?
We have no one.
Okay. I'm now going to close the public portion and bring it back to the Commission. Do we have any questions before we have the applicant for rebuttal? No questions? Commissioner Bedstead, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bonadelli, do you want rebuttal? No, I don't think so. Okay. Seeing none, I'll close that and bring it back to the Commission for any comments.
I have a few. The eight years I've been on this Commission, almost everything brought before us has mitigated negative debt, GPA and track map, all in one setting to get this done in an expedient manner so the developer, everybody can move on quickly. So there's nothing in this, the way it's been presented, that's out of order from Mr. Miller, from what I've heard tonight from everyone and from Mr. Bonadelli, I'm sure Mr. Bonadelli will work with you, so please keep an open mind on listening and getting together to make this happen on it. Another thing is, be very thankful that he has agreed to reduce the number of houses. With the way things are going in Sacramento today, bills that are in committee today, you could have a lot more houses on that property in the future if it was to sit out there any longer. The way it looks is that they want to take this portion that you're sitting in here today away from the cities. A bill in committee today will put all of this in front of a committee that is appointed by Sacramento. That committee may never care one bit about the history of Clovis or the Clovis way of life, just their agenda. So be very thankful... So be very thankful that this is happening, we have control of it today, and Mr. Bonadelli has agreed to work with you, reduce the number of houses, so there's a lot of things we've seen in front of us where they said, no, we're not reducing this number of houses. So very thankful that you have done that, to work with the neighbors on it, so I'm in favor of what's been put in front of us.
Does that mean comments?
I, I have to, Commissioner Hinkle, first of all, want to thank everyone for attending tonight, taking time out of your busy schedule to come on down here and voice your concerns or appreciation to the developer. I've always, in the short period of time, I've only been on, I think around four years, the short period of time that I've been on, I see successful ventures, joint ventures between neighbors, existing neighbors, and developers coming in. And when they work together as a team, everybody wins, everyone wins. And I've seen this today with this development. Can we improve the notification process? Yes, and I think our staff is going to work on that. But strictly by law, Mr. Bonadelli has exceeded. He's met twice officially, and a number of times on individual concerns on property owners. As I spin through this 160, 156-page document, it appears to me that he's, he added additional meetings beyond the one required now before the planning commission, there's another required after the planning commission before the city council. He's changed his zoning density from medium, from medium-high to medium, which is significant. He's increased the number of height restrictions on properties from this document till tonight, so he's expanded on the single stories. And some of those, I'm sure, were specifically addressed on Mr. Miller's concern. He's agreed to fence modifications in terms of a 50-50 split, and he has agreed to install light shields on street lamps to direct the light downward, so it still allows the neighbors to have a view of the night sky. That seems to me to be a developer that wants to work, wants to be a good neighbor. And this development is higher in density than I would like to see, but I'm old school, and I like, I like the old, old days. And the days today are not them. So I commend the Bonadellas on working with the neighbors and continuing to work with them. I would, I would beseech them to do that, and I'm in favor of the project.
Commissioner Bedstead, do you have any final comments?
Yes, I just want to assure Ms. Kemp, who spoke earlier, and other members of the public, that, at least for me, and I believe I can speak on behalf of my fellow commissioners, that this is not pre-decided. We undoubtedly want to hear from members of the public, from property owners, those influences are very important. I personally seek to seek concessions from developers and surrounding property owners with many of the projects that are presented to us. I want to see those win-win situations created, and as Mr. Bonadelli expressed, not everyone will always get the outcome that they were seeking, but if we can create enough wins to make it favorable for both parties, I, I'm in favor of that. In this instance, I see Mr. Bonadelli demonstrate that he wants to partner. We've heard from other members of the public who have demonstrated and shared the partnership that has been going on here. So I too am in favor of this project. I am appreciative to Mr. Bonadelli and team for the concessions that they're making for the neighbors, and I'm confident that with the subsequent dialogue that they will have, further concessions may be made. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to echo what the other commissioners have stated. Anything that's given to us tonight, there's no foregone conclusion as to how any vote is going to go. And yes, we generally do see multiple items being approved, or multiple items for one project being approved. I believe the applicant has really worked with the neighbors. We have a lot of items that come before us that are much more highly contested, where there's not a lot of working together, no collaboration. I think there's been a lot of concessions made on his part. I find it unfortunate that many of you did not receive the first notification. I have every faith that city staff will be able to look into that and come up with some set guidelines as to what the notification is going to look like. So I do apologize for that, for whatever error, whether you didn't get it in the mail or whether you lost it. But I'm glad that you were able to come tonight and speak. As for this particular project, I see no problems with the project, I think it looks good. I really appreciate the attention to detail, and especially looking at what we've stated in the past in terms of garage size, driveway length, sidewalks on both sides of the streets, a lot of issues that, as a Commission, we really try to push in our projects. I think they've done a really good job, and I too am in favor of this project. Seeing that, does someone want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve mitigated negative declaration for general plan amendment GPA 2020-001.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hinkle, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, to approve mitigated negative deck for GPA 2020-001 and associated entitlements. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve general plan amendment 2020-001.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hinkle, seconded by Chair Hatcher, to approve GPA 2020-001. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
I'd like to make a motion to approve rezon 2020-001.
I'll second, it's a pre-zone.
Pre-zone.
Yeah, I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hinkle, seconded by Chair Hatcher, to approve pre-zone R 2020-001. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve track map 6304.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hinkle, seconded by Chair Hatcher, to approve TM 6304. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
And is there any old business? Seeing none, any new business? Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting at 7:38.